Good evening, everyone. We have a regular meeting here of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. The time is 5:00. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malik?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Gole?
Here.
And Deputy City Manager Belasco?
Here.
Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight, Council?
Any additions or deletions, Council? Okay, no? All right. Go right to update from our city manager?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Just an update on electric vehicles. We got the new Mustang in on the police side, and that's being detailed. And that's the first one. We'll be getting the second electric vehicle for the police department. It's not in yet, but it's on its way. We'll be installing electric charging stations, and they'll be installed by summer at the Welcome Center and here at City Hall parking lot. And that was on a grant that we received the money, the funding to do that. Excuse me. Conference stations along the beach at Second Avenue currently being renovated. We will also be installing heat for year-round use at Second Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue in those conference stations. I want to give a shout-out to our special projects. Our guys at Public Works that do an excellent job. The council's very proud of them. That's Ronnie, Steve, Zach, and Carl. They're the four guys that do the complete renovation on ocean and doing ones on beach also. So they're really talented. We're very fortunate to have them. They're also going to be installing showers at each of the beach entrances along Beach Drive, and that's being done by Public Works and our Department of Sewer and Water working together. Installation of public address system that the deputy mayor was working on is now going to be starting in about a week, and that's going to go from Convention Hall north along Beach Avenue for this summer. As I reported to Council last meeting, public safety is first and foremost, of course, in my mind and in yours, and we do have a safe and caring community. Our police, firefighters, EMTs, code enforcement, and fire inspectors collectively do an excellent job, which brings me to the point that just a reminder to the listening audience that the start of this new year, we have many new owners of short-term rentals and the properties. It doesn't matter if you were renting one room or a whole property, you must have mercantile license, liability, insurance, and a fire inspection. This is for your own safety and for your own investment. The fire inspectors, just for a point of interest, have done over 3,000 inspections so far and re-inspections to date, and we currently have about 1,490 mercantile licenses that have been issued. The arches along the promenade look great. The Mitchell Iron Works is doing all the iron fabrication, and I'm sure they won't be blown away. They really look like they're sturdy and doing a good job. The stained glass windows in the AME church, if you haven't seen them yet, they just look beautiful. It's really awesome, and it's starting to bring that AME church together. I want to thank my partner here, Lou, for all the following up and getting the AME church completed. He's doing a great job with that. We now have three AEDs on the Washington Street Mall, and I want to thank firefighter Dave Jackson, who's been working along with people to get those AEDs installed. So hopefully, God forbid, we don't need them, but they'll be there. We have the directional signs, how to get there if somebody's having a heart issue. The 15 mile-an-hour speed limit signs that council passed, and along the 20 mile speed limit, speed signs are going to be going up by March. Some of the 15 mile-an-hour speed limit signs are going up now around the mall area, but the others, the 20 miles an hour will be done sometime in March before our season gets fully here. Councilman Meyer, I want to thank him for working on the opening celebration of the new firehouse that's going to be open this spring. It's really looking great. If you haven't seen it, ladies and gentlemen, take a ride by. It looks wonderful with the new doors. It's starting to get closed in. Soon we'll have some heat to complete the interior of that building. So I think we're pretty much, Mayor, on schedule. It's coming together. I know last year we lost a lot of time because of the inclement weather, the snow. So Lou and I are also working, thinking about summer season with help. We've had problems in the past. We're looking into a job fair to go to local high schools to look at position for beach taggers, lifeguards, Public Works employees, and part-time firefighters, EMTs for the summer. That's it, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you very much. And City Solicitor, any updates?
I don't have anything to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Go to ordinances for introduction.
We have 487-2022, an ordinance to update the uniform salary and classification plan for the Department of Personnel positions in the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
489-2023, an ordinance amending Section 38 of the City of Cape May Code to update ambulance and emergency service fees.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Who motioned and who seconded?
I'll take the motion.
You'll take the motion, and I'll take the second.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments on this one, Council? Roll call. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a housekeeping item on this ordinance. This will amend, obviously, the billing for emergency services fees to update them. This was at the request of the Fire Department. Just a housekeeping thing. The following section has a reference to, this amends 38-5, 38-6 actually is not referenced in this code, but also has an amount in there. So I would just suggest that the one that goes out for publishing also updates the section. The long and the short of it is I have a draft of this that updates all the numbers in the code.
You'll have that for us for second reading, then?
For second reading. You can just incorporate that in your vote tonight, and then I will have the updated ordinance to the clerk to publish, and it'll be ready for second reading.
Mr. Gillen Schwartz, is there a fee increase in 38-6?
It just references the fee in 38-5. So you would essentially have 850 and 700 in 38-6.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
490-2023, an ordinance amending Section 482 of the City of Cape May Code to update tree regulations and eliminate posting on trees.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say this is so that you're not allowed to affix signs on trees using types of screws or anything that could damage a tree. Thank you, Mr. Gillen Schwartz, for working on this.
And thank you for working with the Tree Commission for this. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. 485-2022, an ordinance amending Section 525 of the City of Cape May Code to provide minimum stormwater management and grading requirements for development in the City of Cape May and regulation of nuisance causing conditions.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a public hearing on this. Is anyone here wishing to speak on 485-2022, this ordinance? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Any questions or comments, Council? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes, and I just want to thank the planning board, our solicitor, and the planning board solicitor as well, and Craig Hurles, the engineer, for working together on this. Bill Bazerra, thank you.
488-2022, an ordinance amending Section 10 of the Cape May City Code regarding purchasing procedures to include a requirement to assure adequate security and control for software in use by the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Looks like we have a public hearing on 488. This is regarding software and cybersecurity. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Council, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
Next, we have the public portion on resolutions only. Those wishing to publicly comment, please come forward, give your name and address, and speak directly into the microphone.
Anyone here this evening wishing to speak on the resolutions?
For identification purposes, I'm James A. Testa, 1501 Beach Avenue, Cape May, New Jersey, and I'm commenting on proposed Resolution 5201, 2023. Are you taking all comments on all resolutions? Is that the?
On all resolutions.
That's the gist?
Yes.
As the council members know, the members of the Municipal Parking Advisory Committee have written you and given you extensive comments with respect to the adoption of this resolution. And I don't want to spend and waste your time by reading this letter verbatim, but I would like to have some assurance that you've received it and that it'll be placed in the record of the meeting so that you have a full copy of it, and people will have reference of that. Is that okay?
Yes.
With y'all?
That's correct.
Good, because I know you don't want to read it again, and I don't want to read it verbatim. But really, what's at issue here, and this is a comment letter that was given to you by all members of the existing Municipal Parking Advisory Committee. It's a committee that has had really one of the longest of the advisory committee histories in Cape May. It's a committee that's produced and had a fair amount of success in a pretty difficult task in a city that has serious problems in the ways of traffic and parking and transportation. But to approach overall what you're trying to do with respect to the resolution, I'd like to say that nobody on the committee here objects to the scheme that's being put in here for the evaluation and continuation of advisory committees. It's a good approach, and it's a regular approach, and it's a uniform approach. So we're not here to dispute how you want to take care of advisory committees. I think that's a good thing to do. But what we are here, and I'm here expressing a fair amount of surprise, almost bordering on shock, that the list of committees expected to be carried through through a 2023 term did not include the MPAC. And as you can see from our letter, for a lot of reasons, we think that that's a mistake, and we think it's ill-advised, and it really doesn't serve the city for a continuation of the tasks that this committee was assigned. There seemed to be some misconception that because we're called the MPAC, Municipal Parking Advisory Committee, that that's all we do is look at parking. That was an original name for the committee, but as some of you will remember who were present or watching in mid-2022, the committee was reactivated after COVID, and it was given the task of studying and developing recommendations for a citywide transportation system. And that's a complex problem. It's a problem we all have to deal with. It's a problem we started on in making recommendations in 2019, and quite frankly, it's something we've been working very hard on through the balance of 2022. Now, we appreciate that the council wants to review and regulate the performance of advisory committees, and I will say that we've been working really hard for the last five or six months, but not for a whole year and not for the fair kind of evaluation that your new system on the resolution seems to provide. So we're kind of short in terms of the time period for performance, and we're actually just a little bit short of delivering fairly comprehensive recommendations to council with respect to the topic that we've been studying. We think it would be wrong to chop off this committee and not allow it to function officially for the balance of 2023. And I say that because we would be developing and delivering to council comprehensive recommendations on a citywide transportation system. And there are lots of nuances to that, a lot of pieces to it. They're not all developed now. We're working hard on it. Frankly, we really don't know what authority we would have since we're not listed in the resolution. And more than just delivering recommendations to you, we think that there's follow-up that needs to be done along with the city administration based on the recommendations we would be making. So in short, we think it's really not a wise and prudent thing to do to not include the NPAC, and please feel free to rename us if transportation is really our goal. But we think it's a mistake not to include us in an otherwise really good resolution. And so the reason we're here is to ask council to add the NPAC to the standing advisory committees that will be in place for 2023. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Any other comments? Okay, Stacy? I think you know the deal, Stacy.
Stacy Sheehan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I'm up here to make a comment on Resolution 5201, the parking committee. This resolution, again, like Mr. Testa said, it's not that we're against the resolution. I think it's a good idea to yearly review these committees. The committee started in, I think it was September, October timeframe, the parking committee did. I was really shocked when I was notified by Bonnie that she received an email from a mayor. You know, this committee, all committees were done by resolution. The people are put on by resolution. I think if they were going to be disbanded, it should have been by resolution. I understand that this resolution is coming forth to kind of secretly get rid of the parking committee without going forth and saying we're getting rid of it. You know, there are three listed. One is the bicycle committee, the beach safety, and?
MTRAC.
MTRAC. I should know that one. I was surprised that the library wasn't on there. The one that we're deciding what is going to happen with the city library right now, the current one, wasn't listed. And I also understand that the police station wasn't listed. And I guess that's because they're task force and not committees, and that as a council, you don't approve them, is what I'm understanding.
I can clarify that. I guess I'll call you, Miss Sheehan. So the idea was just to have annually, in connection with reorg, do the advisory committees. Now, all task forces are advisory committees, but not all advisory committees are task forces. And that was kind of the idea of separating the two, because task forces are just related to a singular task rather than overall policy. So actually, in paragraph three, it indicates that all others, advisory committees that are not referenced will be dissolved. Like you said, it would effectively dissolve the parking committee.
Right, because if you look back at the resolution, it was task-oriented when they put the parking committee in place this time around.
So, but to address about the task forces, the library advisory committee is by ordinance, and this specifically says that this resolution's not addressing that because it's an ordinance.
No, 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 you're talking about the wrong one. I'm talking about?
I'm going to get to the other one.
No, no, the library I'm talking about is what you're going to do with the current library.
And that's listed in here, too, which is, there's the police station task force is not affected by this, and the existing library task force, it's in italics in paragraph three, is not going to be affected by this either.
But is there a reason why they're not voted on by council as a resolution?
They are, and they were created by resolution.
I don't think there was a resolution put in for those.
Well, we, at the very least, had resolution, I think, addressing membership on that existing library task force. But those are done and undone by resolution, the task forces, just like advisory committees. But the point of this is just to carve those out, because once the task is done, there's no need for the committee, like the fire station task force. It's over and done with because the fire station is being built right now. And same thing, once we figure out what we're doing with the library.
And there's the police task force.
And same thing, once the police station gets underway, there'll be no need for that task force. But parking, municipal taxation revenue, bicycle pedestrian, those are kind of ongoing policy issues. That was the basis for kind of separating them.
Okay. Then my other question has to do with Resolution 5601 with De Blasio. I guess I'm kind of confused with 5601 and 5701. They're talking about the same work that's being done with, has to do with Lafayette Street. And with De Blasio, it doesn't say how much it's going to cost the city with that contract. And I wasn't sure, with that resolution 5601, they're talking about doing, I guess, connections. And then if you look at Resolution 5701, it also talks about doing the same connections. And that was for $100,000 for the 5701.
So one of them is for the engineering work and then construction phase services for the engineer, and then the second one, which is Chia Vone, is a change order for the physical construction work.
So how much are we paying for the engineering services since it didn't go out to bid?
Well, I think we're going to have actually an amendment to that when we get to. It's going to be less, the construction work, right?
We have a not-to-exceed amount of $14,000 on there.
Okay.
This is an unusual circumstance where, because of the timing of Lafayette Street and the county moving along with its project, we're under the gun to get this work done. So there's a change order to Pennsylvania Avenue Phase 7, so it falls under that contract, and it'll follow the same rates that were agreed upon for Phase 7. I do not expect it to come up near $14,000, but that was?
For engineering?
Right, but that was a not-to-exceed amount that we put in.
Can I just ask, if it's a city-county road, because these are fire hydrants, wouldn't it be covered underneath the city, I mean, under the county's responsibility?
We're putting in isolation valves. They will not put that in. They're a specialty item. Our water department does not have the equipment nor the expertise to put in. We're also removing a galvanized pipe, so.
No, my question was?
It does fall to the city.
No, my question, the county. Is the county not responsible for that since it's their road?
No.
No, they're not responsible for any of that? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Bonnie? Any other, Bonnie?
Bonnie Castles, 914 Columbia Avenue. Just to follow up on the comments that Jim made, when we were resurrected in June, I think the actual resolution was put forth, our task was directed at developing a citywide transportation system to benefit the visitors and the residents, general public, and to try and calm some of the craziness that happens in our high season on the roads and people looking for parking. I think we've done a great job of researching. We've looked at other communities. We've, at the suggestion of Mr. Crowley from the MTRAC, we even looked at other cities throughout the state to see what they did for parking and transportation. Some of them have authorities, some of them have utilities addressing these things, but the city does need a transportation system. It also needs pretty significant oversight of that transportation system. I think we've all commented in the past year of the fact that we've seen so many empty jitneys. And I think part of that is due to the fact that it wasn't well-advertised or promoted or the public wasn't educated sufficiently. Or in the season, the people that come here to visit usually turn over on a weekly basis and sometimes every two weeks. So you're addressing a new audience every week. You're addressing a new audience every two weeks. A message put out in June won't necessarily get to people that come here in July or August. The maps that were originally developed for the jitney routes, there's one posted on the city website, and it clearly says 2019, so it hasn't been updated since then. Things like that, signs, directions on, you know, park here for free, ride for free. We did not look at parking. I know that the mayor's message focused on the fact that the city and the council wanted to focus strictly on parking with the next one coming up being Lafayette Street Park. And the parking committee actually had never looked at the Lafayette Street Park because the parking that was slated for that park was for the people utilizing recreation in that park. It was parking for the soccer, baseball, pickleball courts, basketball courts, dog park, not to the general public. Because if you open it up to the general public, there'll never be any parking for the people that want to go and enjoy the park. We did look at adding additional parking, but mostly as a transportation hub, because three of the lines, we had talked about increasing from essentially two routes to four, and three of those would have utilized a transportation hub that was located on Pittsburgh Avenue. So I would respectfully request that you allow us to finish the job that we were assigned and to allow us to help with the oversight and the, you know, education and developing those products, et cetera, to make the transportation system successful, because we definitely need it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Onto the consent agenda.
Does anyone want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Are we voting on the reports separately? We have the question?
We can do it all together.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, no problem. Any, anything that needs to be removed, council?
Can I, can I pull 5501?
Okay.
2023, please.
5801, 2023.
Okay.
52, please.
Okay. Anything else, council? Okay.
For reports tonight, we have the tax collector's report for the month of September, tax collector's report for the month of October, tax collector's report for the month of November, the fire incident report for the month of December, police incident report for the month of December, police department annual report for the year 2022, tax assessor's year-end report for the year 2022. Resolutions tonight, we have 51-01-2023, resolution appointing members to the Cape May City Shade Tree Commission, 53-01-2023, resolution acknowledging assignment of performance guarantee regarding 10 Ocean Street, block 1057, lot 5, and 7 Ocean LLC, 54-01-2023, resolution authorizing application for State of New Jersey grant for production of public information related to the history and preservation of the city of Cape May, 56-01-2023, resolution authorizing a contract for professional services to De Blasio and Associates PC for additional professional engineering, design, and construction phase services for Lafayette Street utility improvements, 57-01-2023, resolution authorizing change order to contract for reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phase 7, 59-01-2023, resolution authorizing application for grant funding to Cape May County open space for Kiwanis Park, and 60-01-2023, resolution for the payment of bills.
Council, before we take a motion on that, just on 57-01, I think council and the manager's office is in receipt of a revised change order, and the number that was in the original resolution was $100,156.91. Based on the reduction that is in front of you tonight, that number's going to go down to $80,398.43. And so I would just suggest if you're going to vote on that, to incorporate that change, and I can update the resolution and get that to our clerk.
Do we need to make an amendment at this time?
You can make a motion to amend the resolution to reflect the updated figure, which is less than what was in there before.
Should we pull that from the consent agenda now first?
You can, or you can incorporate that in the
Could I get a motion to pull that from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to pull that from the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call.
7. Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes. Now, do we want to go back to the consent agenda or vote on that one?
Well, that was it for the consent agenda.
Say again?
That was it for the consent agenda.
That vote was for the consent agenda? Did everyone understand that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to, well?
Well, now, we can just go in order from the ones that were removed, if you want to do that, or just
I was under the understanding that we were, we made a motion to remove that from the consent agenda, and that's what that vote was.
Right.
Okay. So I'd appreciate, is everyone under that same understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
So now a vote on the consent agenda?
From the consent agenda. Now, I'd like to call for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes. And can I get a motion on 57 now?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 57.
With the amended
With the amendment as described by the solicitor.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes, thank you, council.
Next, we have 52-01-2023, resolution confirming city advisory committees for the 2023 calendar year and a uniform policy for annual confirmation of committees and their membership.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir, mayor. I agree with some of the members of the audience about putting the Municipal Parking Advisory Committee back on this, on this resolution. I value these volunteers' time and efforts to solve some of the problems that Cape May has. As we know, parking is probably the biggest problem in Cape May, and as well as traffic and things of that nature. I'd like to see this committee continue to exist and to give city council recommendations. And I think moving forward, if we were to put them on this resolution, that we should possibly come up with a new, another resolution to give them some focus of what the city council would like to see them work on. And as a member of city council, I'd be happy to volunteer as liaison to this committee as well.
Is that a motion to add that?
No, that was, that was leading up to the motion. The motion is to amend this resolution to include the Municipal Parking Advisory Committee.
Do I have a second to that motion? No.
Well, seeing there's none, I'm still going to propose a resolution for our next council meeting, reestablishing this committee and its members as well as functions of this committee.
Okay.
So hopefully that gets passed in the next meeting. And I'd be appreciative of anybody's support or involvement in creating this resolution that best fits the city council and keeps this group together, because I do value their work and their opinions.
Just on that, Mr. Meyer, I think four of us, Maureen was not here at the time, voted for this. So, I mean, I think we all understand parking is an issue. We want to make sure that we have the focus where it should be, and I think that's why the council wants to take some time to reevaluate, but I think we can do that through a resolution, so. Okay.
I agree. Councilmember Meyer?
So we have a failed amendment. Do I have a motion on the original 5201?
Well, I think it still stands, right?
We have a motion?
We're just in discussion.
Okay, we have a motion.
We had a failed motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, no, excuse me, no.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
Next, we have 55-01-2023, resolution of support from local governing body authorizing the fiscal year 2022 local recreation improvement grant application funded by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
Yes, I have, on the second page of this, the reason I pulled it from the agenda, the second, whereas on the second, on the backside of that, it says insert name of I think we're looking at Kiwanis for this one.
The idea for, the idea for this grant was to apply for a flooring that could go down over Convention Hall, that we've been trying, been putting into the budget for years, that would, for roller skating and possibly indoor pickleball during the winter time, that we could just put down the floor and then remove it when the season's over rather than continually having to resurface the floor every year.
Okay, and this is different than what I originally
This just gives authorization to
To go for the grant.
Right.
Right, okay.
So would you be specifying the use of the funds when the grant would be applied for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Should that not be
That's not essential.
Highlighted here?
No, I would ask that it be amended to include
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Who wants to make that?
So can I, yeah, can I make a motion to amend that? What would we put in there as far as the project?
Recreational
For recreational opportunities at Convention Hall.
Okay.
Do I have that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Do I have a second?
No, I just seconded it.
Oh.
Maureen made the motion.
But we're amending it. So do we, do I have a motion to amend?
Deputy Mayor made that.
Okay, I apologize, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve as amended Resolution 5501?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes.
Next, we have 57-01-2023, resolution authorizing change order to contract for, we did that one.
Do I have a motion?
We did that one, yeah.
We did that one, yeah, Rome 58. Resolution authorizing change order to contract for Phase 1 of the Allen AME Church Restoration Project, change order number 2.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I asked this, for this to be pulled. I just had a question, and I just want to get clarity that for Phase 1, there'll be no other anticipated change orders coming forth?
No, we do not anticipate any more after this.
Okay, so these fees would be all that we could expect for Phase 1, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes. Okay, council, any old business? No? Any new business, city solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Okay. Deputy mayor?
Yeah, just two quick things. I know that the library task force was mentioned here tonight. There is a link on the city website to go on. There's a few questions, how we would look at repurposing that. We're going to take all of those considerations and then research that a little bit more. So just like a public service announcement, if everybody could go on and do that, that would be great. The second thing, council approved last year a grant for HPC design standards, which is in the works currently. And then just tonight, you approved that grant to be written to kind of back up some of those standards with videoing, you know, kind of like a public service. So thank you.
Yeah, that's wonderful, Maureen, yeah.
Thank you to the HPC.
Yeah.
They're doing great work there.
Definitely, thank you. Councilmember McDade?
Yeah, I just want to thank city administration, working with the city manager, deputy manager, and the city clerk representing MTRAC. We were able to, with the work most chiefly by Marty sitting in the audience, in crafting a letter that will be going out in the next water bill, yep, in the next week or so, really as a reminder to property owners about the requirement for mercantile license, and also that the new state requirement for liability insurance. And we're hoping that that will be well-received. We tried to make sure that the language was in such a way that it appeared to be informational in nature. And so I think there's a couple other venues that will be communicated to. So I think the more we get the word out, we will be able to increase some of the compliance associated with mercantile license for the city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Meyer?
I'd like to, thank you, mayor. I'd like to first start out by thanking the administration and the public works for working on getting those bathrooms heated, you know. You know, it's important that we have these facilities available for people that enjoy walking on our promenade. I also want to thank Mr. Gillen Schwartz for working on that shade tree ordinance, or to, you know, so that we don't have people putting nails in trees. We want to protect our trees in Cape May. Tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting with some of the firehouse folks about having this grand opening of the firehouse. It's important that we do this because this is, this is your building, ladies and gentlemen. You know, you paid for it, and we've, and the voters voted for it. And whether you voted for just having a firehouse or a public safety building, we all wanted a new facility for the firefighters, is what it comes down to. So I think it's something that everybody can support and remember for years to come. And I think it's important that we should mention, as a city council, we've had some interviews for CFL, and we're getting pretty close to solving that issue, which is wonderful. And I want to thank Mr. Yeager and the deputy mayor for working so hard in their subcommittee to vet out some of these applicants as well. And finally, this month, the 27th of January, is the 50th anniversary of the signing of the signing of the Paris Peace Accord, uh, which officially ended the Vietnam War, and, and I was asked to do something for the VFW, so, uh, we're gonna have a plaque created and presented to the VFW on Friday, the twenty-seventh, uh, which is, they already have dinner and food there at that time, and, uh, to, to give honor and thanks to those veterans who, you know, gave their service and the ultimate sacrifice in that war. It's, uh, it's unbelievable, it's been fifty years, I guess, a lot of people, you know, I haven't, I wasn't around back then, but I imagine a lot of people feel like it's gone by pretty quickly, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, and invite anybody that wants to go there to participate and represent the city, and give thanks.
Very nice. Uh, Councilman Yeager?
Um, yeah, normally, uh, this time, I would have a, an update on the police station task force, um, we haven't had a meeting, uh, our regularly scheduled meeting mainly because there's been a tremendous amount of design work going on behind the scenes, there's going to be a meeting next week, on Thursday, where I guess, I'm gonna miss it, by the way, I'm on vacation, but, uh, I'm sure it'll be a great meeting, a lot more updates to come then in the following weeks, so, that's it.
Great, thank you. I just want to compliment, um, the stained glass, and I, you said, uh, thanks to Lou and, Lou, I, I, my compliments to it, working hard on, on getting all these projects, and, and working with, you know, stained glass people, and, and then people, and it's really, really neat, but, uh, just share with the public that, uh, on Monday, on, yesterday, MLK Day, uh, the city started installing the stained glass windows at the AME Church, and it really was a special moment to, to share with everyone, the, the former pastor of the AME Church was there, and she just was, just passing compliments to, to everybody, so I, I just give you that update, and, uh, thank you, and I, and I also want to say thank you too, for the, the DPWs doing a lot of good work, especially even in this cold, so they're, they're getting it done, so. With that, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this evening? Please.
Stacy Shan, nine twenty-eight Columbia Avenue, I have a comment about the salary ordinance. I noticed there's a lot of large increases to a lot of those salaries in there. Uh, one of the notable ones that came, that I saw was the stipend, that the deputy city manager used to be in a stipend, and now it's actually in the sal, underneath salary, and it used to be around twenty, twenty-five, and now it's sixty-five thousand. It was only until a couple years ago that we got a deputy city manager, and it was because our city manager was also doing another task in, in the city besides just being a city manager. So, if you look at Lower Township, Lower Township just has a city manager, lot larger than Cape May, they don't have a deputy, and now we're gonna be spending close to two-hundred thousand dollars just for the, the city manager position with a deputy, so I just want to bring that to light. But I also want to say, which I thought was very good, was you remove the special projects stipend out of the stipend area, I think that was a very good move. Also, I'm glad you guys get, got a pay raise, I think that was long overdue, as a counsel.
Mayor, if I may, uh, if I may, the, the deputy manager doesn't get sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, I mean, that's a spread that's not gonna happen. There's even a spread in my salary, I think it was at one fifty-five, and I get one thirty-five. And also, I worked in Lower Township, and Lower Township, out of all due respect, doesn't have a paid fire department, paid EMTs, paid lifeguards, paid beach taggers, there's a whole lot more that goes on, and Lower Township never, ever got the grants that Lou's been working on with our grants coordinator.
I'm just saying, in the salary ordinance, it was listed at sixty-five thousand.
Let's, and the salary ordinance, I've been working with the clerk, is to refine it, because, so that nothing was hidden, the basic paperwork from the past, we've been trying to clear it up between the civil service, uh, the civil service titles, the union titles, the starting salaries, the, the change in the salaries with the, with the unions. My next meeting, I met with Emily, she's gonna have it a lot cleaner, so that, I didn't like it where you're striking it, but we didn't want to hide anything, that's where it was, and these are-
Well, I think becoming it out of a stipend, a stipend, they don't get retirement, or I think when it becomes part of salary, it becomes, um, part of the pension, so that also increases on that end.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out that this is not a change. This did not change.
It is. It's, if you look at the salary ordinance, it's actually, it's, if you look at it, it says sixty-five on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, there is a change, it struck out, the twenty-five and twenty are struck out, and sixty-five's put in, so I look at it as a change.
No, no, that changed, that strikeout is to make it minimum wage.
Sixty-five thousand minimum wage?
No, it goes minimum wage, sixty-five thousand does not change, it was there last year.
So, twenty and twenty-five were struck out?
Yes. The minimum's minimum wage, that's the change that was made to the deputy manager position.
Okay.
I don't want to give everybody bad news, but I don't think you guys got a raise either, yet.
It's disappointing. Again, it went to ten thousand, it was at eight thousand for the city-
But that's-
City council, and it went to ten, which I thought was good.
Yeah, right.